Follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
President.
Ariola.
Here.
Aviles. Ayala.
Present.
Baron.
Here.
Bacher. Brannon.
Here.
Brewer. Brooks Powers.
Present.
Kabon.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Present.
Farias. Bacher.
Present.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Here.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Aviles.
Presente.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson. Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan. Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velazquez.
Present.
Vernikoff.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Wan.
Present.
Jaeger. Borelli. Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation delivered by Rabbi Barry Dove Katz from Conservative Synagogue Adath Israel of Riverdale located at 475 West 250th Street in Riverdale. Welcome.
"Today is pregnant with eternity." That's how Rabbi Gerson Cohen, who was the Chancellor of the Jewish Theological Seminary in Manhattan and a member of my synagogue in the Bronx, translated a phrase that Jews repeat over and over again as we start the new year. Today is pregnant with eternity, hayom harat olam. At the beginning of a new year, we judge our actions against the yardstick of nothing less than forever. We see every moment as full of promise and possibility, and in a city as dynamic and ever-changing as New York, we understand the notion of being pregnant with eternity. Every day in our great city, artists create cutting-edge creations, athletes achieve incredible heights, individuals incubate ideas, and the future leaders of our city, the future city council members, and leaders of our nation and leaders of the world are being born right now in this great city. Today is pregnant with eternity is a beautiful translation of the Hebrew, but it can be pretty overwhelming. I'd like to get through this invocation. Getting through eternity feels like a lot. Getting through a day, getting through a week feels like a lot. It's a lot of time of uncertainty, eternity. Something new is being born right now, but we don't exactly know what that is. We don't know what challenges we'll face and whether we will rise to meet them in ways that will be judged against, judged well against the standard of eternity. All of you, people in this room, have chosen communal service. You know the heavy weight of seeing each moment as pregnant with eternity. Under the leadership of Speaker Adrian Adams, you watch over the everyday, the countless decisions that will echo for good or bad. Eternity asks us to take a long view of our work. Will we raise our heads and hearts above the partisan and petty to build a city that is environmentally responsible? Eternity wants to know. A society where people go to sleep at night secure that they have enough to eat and a roof over their heads, eternity asks. A community where the promise of education and the protection of healthcare is assured, eternity asks us. Cities might seem very solid, but they're delicate. They take years to build, but much of what holds us together can fall apart if we are not vigilant. Will we live in a city that is divided and violent and full of prejudice and hatred, or will we live in peace? Will we be decent and kind? Will we, in every conversation and deliberation and vote, recognize the divine image in every human being? President John F. Kennedy said, "Democracy is never a final achievement. It is a call to an untiring effort." Cities, especially ones as vibrant as New York City, require similar untiring effort. In the Jewish tradition, we say, "You are not required to complete the work, but neither are you free to desist from it." Eternity asks us to get to work. When the challenges of eternity of the moment feel overwhelming, I pray to God, who exists for eternity, to give me strength, and I pray that God will give each one of you strength. I pray to the God who exists for eternity to give me wisdom, and I pray that God gives each one of you wisdom. I pray to the God who exists for eternity to remind us that we need not meet challenges alone. We can join together and be God's partners in lovingly creating the better world that is being born right now. I pray to God, who exists for eternity, that you do not feel alone or lonely in your work, that when you look for partners, you will find them in people, in eternal values, and in God. Today really is pregnant with eternity, and let us meet today and every day with faith and hope.
Thank you. I will now ask Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, I believe someone you know very well, to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you. I'm very excited for you to be here, Rabbi. Rabbi Barry Dove Katz serves the Greater Riverdale Community at the Conservative Synagogue Adath Israel, building a vibrant community that leads into the values that you spoke of in your invocation. But I know him very well. He was the rabbi who took me on my first trip to Israel, I think shortly after my teenage years, and through there ushered me through many lifecycle events, and then eventually my family. But that relationship is just one in the many that Rabbi Katz built throughout the entire Bronx, building relationships within the Jewish community, outside of the Jewish community, to build a better Bronx, a work that speaks to the interfaith work we so desperately need in our city, the interracial work we so desperately need, and you do that work and you embody that work. And I just want to thank you one more time, Rabbi Barry Dove Katz, for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Alexa Yulis.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of September 14, 2023 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Well, messages and papers from the mayor.
M174, Mayor's Management Report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M175 through M178, mayoral appointments.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Communications from city, county, and borough offices?
M179, Bronx Borough President Appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by taking a moment to address the tragic death of a one-year-old child at a Bronx daycare center in Councilmember Sanchez's district. Our hearts go out to the family of Nicholas Dominici, experiencing unimaginable pain from losing their baby, as well as to the children who are still recovering today from opioid exposure and their families. We entrust our precious children to daycare centers with the expectation that they will be safe. To lose a child in any circumstance is profoundly devastating, but for it to occur in a place that is depended upon for care is an unacceptable betrayal, and no parent should ever have to endure this. As a grandmother of small children myself, I cannot fathom the immense pain that Nicholas's family and the families of the children hospitalized are going through right now. Our children deserve to be safe. The circumstances that allowed this incident to take place are reprehensible, and it is critical that a tragedy like this never happens again. I also want to address the ongoing disciplinary process related to the killing of Kowaski Trewick by two NYPD officers. NYPD Deputy Commissioner Maldonado's recommendation that no disciplinary action be taken against the officers is disappointing, and it is unjust. The NYPD failed to hand over key evidence to the CCRB, including body warm camera footage in a timely manner, causing unnecessary delays that impeded the CCRB's ability to do their job. And yet, these delays caused by the NYPD were the reason for the deputy commissioner's recommendation, which is totally unjustifiable. The Trewick family has been forced to fight and wait for years to attain some form of accountability for Kowaski's killing. This is far too long and has only added to the suffering of losing a loved one. Commissioner Kabon can still do the right thing by holding the officers accountable for their actions, and that is what the Trewick family and our city deserve. Accountability is critical to our public safety. Over the past month, our city has been mourning the loss of Dale West, who fell to his death last month in Councilmember Mealy's district while repairing a home. He leaves behind a nine-year-old son and a loving family, and we express our condolences to them during this very difficult time. On Sunday, our Jewish communities observed the start of Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the year. I hope that everyone who observed had a meaningful and reflective holiday, and for all those celebrating Sukkot, I wish you all, akag Sukkot samech, have a wonderful and joyful holiday. Tomorrow is the start of the Mid-Autumn Festival, a traditional festival celebrated in China according to the lunar calendar. Countries across Asia that also observe the lunar calendar are celebrating their own holidays, including Chuseok, which is South Korea's Thanksgiving, and Sukimi, which is Japan's version of the Mid-Auditorium Festival. Have a happy and healthy celebration. Last Thursday was National Opioid Awareness Day. More than 3,000 people died from an overdose in 2022, the highest number since the city began reporting such deaths in the year 2000. We can keep each other and our communities safe by approaching substance abuse as an urgent matter of public health and safety, concentrating on public health solutions to this deadly crisis. We must recognize the racial disparities in the addiction and overdose crisis and focus on more prevention, harm reduction, and treatment services in the most impacted communities. I appreciate our work as a council to address this crisis, and we must continue to deepen our efforts to save lives. Last Thursday was also World's Alzheimer's Day, a day to increase public awareness about Alzheimer's disease, which is a growing public health crisis in New York. So many have personal connections to this disease, including our own council member and agent committee chair, Crystal Hudson, who cared for her mother as she lived with Alzheimer's. Councilmember Hudson is organizing a council team to participate in the annual Walk to End Alzheimer's on Saturday, October 21, and we hope members can join together in representing our body. Let's continue to work towards solutions that support those with the disease, as well as their families and caregivers. Sunday was World Day of Migrants and Refugees, a day that asks Catholics around the world to remember those displaced by conflict and persecution. The Catholic Church has been celebrating the day since 1914, and it is an occasion to express concern for different vulnerable people on the move, to pray for them as they face challenges, and to increase awareness about the opportunities that migration offers. This is a message needed now more than ever. As we work towards solutions to support asylum seekers and longtime New Yorkers, it's critical that we recognize one another's humanity. People have fled their homes and endured immense journeys of trauma in search of safety. As we mark World Day of Migrants and Refugees, let's remember our shared humanity and aspirations to pursue life and liberty for ourselves and our families. Next, colleagues, I want to wish a belated happy birthday to our very own Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala. Deputy Speaker Ayala celebrated her birthday on the 24th, and we also wish a belated happy birthday to our council member Farrah Lewis, whose birthday was on the 25th. Happy, happy, belated birthday to you both. Finally, colleagues, I want to take a special moment to announce that City Council's Special Counsel and veteran Jim Karas is retiring at the end of this week. How dare you. For over three decades, Jim has exemplified what it means to be a true public servant. He has made an immeasurable impact on the council, this city, and the lives of all New Yorkers. Jim joined the staff of the council in 1992. Some of y'all weren't even born in 1990. And he served as counsel to the Committees on Consumer Affairs, Finance, and State and Federal Legislation. He later became counsel to the Council's Finance Division and Deputy General Counsel. After a stint at the Manhattan Borough President's Office with our own council member Gail Brewer, Jim returned to the council in 2019, some of y'all weren't even born in 2019, in 2019, to serve as General Counsel and Special Counsel. For all that Jim has accomplished during his distinguished tenure in the council and public service, those who know him and have had the honor of working with him can attest to just how great of a friend and human being he is. Jim has been our dependable, go-to person for nearly all things in this council, with an inexhaustible willingness to help his colleagues with any question or any need. Jim has a great passion for city government and municipal law and the service of New Yorkers, and he has improved the city council through his contributions. His presence has steadied this council, and his commitment to budget transparency has helped this council flex more of its budgetary powers by securing record units of appropriation and important terms and conditions as part of our budget negotiations. Jim, on behalf of the entire New York City Council and all New Yorkers, and from the very bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for everything you've done for this institution and for our city. We will always be so grateful for your great public service and your friendship. We will miss you dearly. I ask Councilmember Brewer to join me in the front. Of New York City and the entire New York City Council, we present you with this proclamation of thanks. I'm not going to read it all. I'm just going to read the final whereas. Whereas throughout his tenure, Jim's contributions have always exceeded his official titles. Jim is a generous man with his knowledge, experience, and inexhaustible willingness to guide others, as well as his kindness, infectious laugh, which we all know and love, and sense of humor. Upon his departure, he can be proud of our entire city for generations to come. Jim, you have helped to shape this city council and strengthen our entire city. Be it known that the city of New York and the New York City Council gratefully honors James Karas for three decades of stellar service. To the New York City Council and to his fellow New Yorkers, it is signed this 29th day of September in the year 2023 by yours truly, Adrian Adams, Speaker for the entire council, and Councilmember Gail A. Brewer, Councilmember, 6th District of Manhattan. We thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is hard for me because I feel so strongly, as we all do, about this amazing man, but there were some very funny portions of this particular wording, and I'd like to share it. Obviously, we talked about his distinguished career, city business improvement districts that he worked on, the expense, the capital budget, making sure that the lobbyists did the right thing, working on the retiree health benefits trust fund, all the legal review of council legislation, pairing his deep knowledge with creativity. He earned a reputation of being one of the hardest-working attorneys, burning the midnight oil and working on weekends, catching sleep when he could. During Quinn's term, those attending meetings in the council's office might find him asleep on a terribly worn-out couch, and over the course of many hours and naps, his pockets emptied out all of their coins into the couch, the value of which far exceeded its worth as a piece of furniture. And his office, if you've ever been in his friggin' office, in his office, owed to controlled chaos and workspaces of legendary proportions. The papers, the stacks, the files, the open tabs on the desktop belie his organizational thinking. He's probably the leading expert of the city charter separation of powers and issues. Home rule, powers of the city under state law, state constitution, high-profile litigation between the mayor and the city council, all the executive budget transparency that we know he knows, and that the city should have a real say in how funny decisions are made on the budget. He used his expertise to press for this by placing terms and conditions, as we heard. He has a sweet tooth. From 250 Broadway to City Hall and 1 Center Street, he would go to a meeting and easily clean out and open bowls of candy, unwrapping new candy before finishing what he started. During the Bloomberg administration, he set up standing Swedish fish order with City Hall staff raiding the mayor's food stash before arriving at 250 Broadway for meetings. This is the Jim Karas whom we love. Shula Pooter is here, and she brought you a whole friggin' bag of candy. There you go. I know Rob Newman is trying to get here, Anthony Crowell and Liz Fein, his very dear friends, are all trying to get here. We're going to miss you tremendously. We all have your cell number, and we will use it on a regular basis.
I just want to thank you all. It's been my honor to serve the city council, this speaker, the former Borough President, all of you, and I just had, I was fortunate enough to have the most wonderful career in city government, so thank you.
Let's just applaud Jim one more time. I just can't believe he's leaving. Oh my gosh. Alrighty, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for two new buildings in Councilmember Farias's district. A pre-considered resolution to renew an Article 5 exemption for one building in Councilmember Abreu's district. Four pre-considered resolutions to act on recently granted state authorization to allow the council to amend the required formula for calculating the fiscal year 2024 property tax rates. Passing this package of resolutions will result in lower property tax rates for Class 1 and Class 2 residential properties in this fiscal year compared to what was adopted in the budget in June. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. 1640 through 16, I'm sorry, 1460 through 1480 Sheridan Boulevard will facilitate three new mixed-use buildings with 100% affordable housing in Councilmember Salamanca's district. It will include approximately 970 housing units, nearly 140,000 square feet of commercial space, and bike and automobile parking spaces. 244 East 106th Street Article 11 disposition will facilitate the development of a 10-story shared supportive housing building under HPD's Share NYC pilot program. It will create approximately 32 affordable units in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. 2761 Plum Second Street rezoning will allow an existing restaurant to continue operating without renewing its BSA special permit every five years in Minority Whipina Vernikoff's district. 125 Greaves Lane will facilitate the conversion of an existing community facility into commercial use in Minority Leader Borelli's district. Next, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 743A, sponsored by Councilmember Raphael Salamanca, would require city employees who can issue summonses or notices of violation to provide a pre-printed handwritten or electronic business card with identifying information to members of the public upon request. The business card would include the employee's name and agency, a telephone number and email address that can be used to contact the agency, and the relevant 311 customer service number. The city employee will indicate that this contact information may be used to submit comments about the encounter. Employees who are engaged in agency-approved undercover activities, who must take immediate action, or are providing identifying information through other forms of documentation like a certificate of inspection or notice of violation are exempt. Thank you to staff members Jaisari Ganapathy, Erica Cohen, CJ Murray, Rachel Cordero, and David Seitzer. Introduction 906A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require an agency or office designated by the mayor to offer off-street parking for tractor trailers and commercial trucks at three or more locations and citywide by 2025. This is especially important in our outer borough residential neighborhoods, where overnight truck parking has taken up curbside space and often blocks car traffic, bus lanes, and/or bike lanes. Thank you to staff members Samuel Breidbart, Mark Cohen, John Brazil, and Kevin Katuski. Thank you to staff members Samuel Bridebart, Mark Cohen, John Brazil, and Kevin Kattowski. Next, we'll vote on Introduction 349, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, which would require the Department of Correction to create a dyslexia screening process for individuals in custody and offer treatment programs for those who are identified. Thank you, staff members Natalie Melzer and Jeremy Whiteman. Introduction 279A, sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, would require the city to only purchase zero emissions light and medium-duty vehicles after 2025 and zero emissions heavy-duty vehicles after 2028. It would also require the city to ensure that its entire fleet of municipal vehicles is converted to zero emissions, zero emissions vehicles by 2038 with earlier goals for some vehicle types. Introduction 279A also requires the training of city workers on the repair and maintenance of these new vehicles and reporting on workforce development to ensure that we are protecting both the environment and our city's workers. We're also voting on a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Majority Leader Powers calling on the mayor to procure on the basis of best value when contracting for the purchase, operation, and maintenance of zero emission vehicles. Thank you to our staff members Brad Reed, Andrew Born, Ricky Chala, Samara Swannston, and Claire McLaughlin. And Introduction 1190, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would create a one-time exception to the maximum age requirement for employees of the FDNY's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services who are seeking to take the next civil service promotion exam to become firefighters. Under existing law, in order to become a firefighter for the FDNY, an individual may not have passed their 29th birthday when applying to take the firefighter exam. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, FDNY hiring cycles were delayed for several years and civil service exams were not offered at their usual frequency. As a result, a group of nearly 300 EMS workers who would have otherwise been eligible to take a promotion exam in 2020 have now reached an age where they are ineligible. This legislation creates a one-time waiver to allow those EMS workers who missed this opportunity to take the upcoming promotion exam in 2024. Thank you to our staff members Josh Kingsley, William Honkak, and Rachel Cordero. We thank you all for your attention. Now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into the discussion of general orders on today's agenda. We'll begin with Councilmember Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I am here to introduce this legislation that the speaker was just talking about to create a one-time waiver from existing age requirements for becoming an FDNY firefighter for EMS workers who would have otherwise been able to take the promotional exam had it been given at its usual frequency but couldn't because of the pandemic, and it's usually given every four years. We all know that firefighters and EMS workers are some of the bravest and most dedicated public servants. They put their lives on the line every day to protect all of us, and during COVID, they continue to be on the front line, sacrificing their health to keep doing the job, and we owe them gratitude. This legislation is a small way to show our appreciation for their service and to give these heroes a fair chance to compete for promotions in the fire department. They really have the skills and expertise necessary to be successful firefighters. They should not be barred from taking the promotional exam simply because they are over the current maximum age, and COVID prevented the city from administering the exam in 2020. There are around 300 of them in this situation. I know that this one-time exemption will not cover everyone who wants to take the exam, although I thank the Speaker's Office and the Mayor's Office because people were at it. I am confident that we have maximized an opportunity that is consistent with the law. It's the right thing to do. Most, 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 thank you, Chair Ariola, head of the Fire Committee. Thank you for your support and also your great appreciation for these amazing civil servants. I want to thank also Andrea Vasquez, Rachel Cordero, Josh Kingsley, William Honrich, and in particular Cynthia Hornig from my office, and I think in the stands Haley Sado, Michael Kavanaugh's amazing dad who also supported this at the hearing when they testified at the Fire Committee, Christopher Negro, Dominic DeFranco, Jordan Timoney. You were fabulous presenters of the best of New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on today's agenda, general orders? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 349A, Dyslexia Screening in City Jails.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts, Intro 279A, Zero Emission Vehicles.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Resos 787 through 789, Base Percentage and Adjusted Base Proportion.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered Resos 790 Property Taxes.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered LU 273 and Reso 798 and Pre-Considered LU 274 and Reso 799 Property Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management, Pre-Considered Intro 1190 FDNY Age Requirement.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, Intro 743A, City Employee Identifying Information.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 253 and 254, 1233 57th Street rezoning.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
LU 259 and Reso 800, 2761 Plum Second Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 260 and 261, 4218 31st Avenue rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU 262 and Reso 801 through LU 265 and Reso 803, Various Zoning Amendments.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 266 and Reso 804, Disposition of City-Owned Property.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 906A, Commercial Truck Parking.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled today on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye on all.
Ariola.
I'm aye on all, especially, I'm sorry, aye on all except for Reso 787, 788, 789, and 790. I'm also pleased to be a prime cosponsor on Intro 1190 with the incomparable Gail Brewer, who never gave up on this idea, and thank all those who were involved in making this happen.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all, happy to support Intro 1190. Congrats, Councilmember Brewer and Ariola.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Botcher.
Aye on all.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to take a moment to congratulate Chair Brannon on the passage of Introduction 906. In my committee, we've had discussions with so many stakeholders to understand how trucking is impacting communities and how we can work together to fix the problem of illegal truck parking. Communities like mine in southeast Queens are frustrated by the noise, pollution, and congestion that trucks generate on neighborhood streets. We have also spoken with truckers who often have trouble finding places to park after long, grueling shifts behind the wheel. Introduction 906 is about addressing community concerns and supporting truckers alike by finding dedicated, non-residential locations where truckers can rest. I just want to note that the enforcement remains an essential component of the city's strategy on this issue. The council will continue to explore legislative solutions and increase its oversight capacity to ensure effective, vigilant enforcement. I thank Councilmember Brannon for his work on this, and I'm grateful for this council's commitment to addressing this issue. And separately, I'd like to be added to Intro 1190. With that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. No problem. Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Just want to commend Councilmember Brewer and our committee chair, Joanne Ariola, for the passage of pre-considered Intro 1190. So many talented young people missed an opportunity to take the firefighters' exam in 2020 through no fault of their own, just due to the COVID emergency, and now because of this measure, which I'm proud to cosponsor, they will have an opportunity to show their worth and no doubt continue to give great service to our city as firefighters and maybe even fire officers in the future. So I'm so proud to see this bill move forward and to support it and to thank my colleagues for championing this issue. I also just want to say briefly a thank you to Jim Karas for his many years of service here in the council. He was a friend and advisor to all three of my District 50 predecessors and to me as well, a phenomenal asset here in the council who will be sorely missed, but I do look forward to trying all my rejected term and condition ideas on his successor. Hopefully, he hasn't briefed them on all of them, and, but I'll certainly miss having him as a friend here in the body, but I know he continues to be a friend to all of us in life, so God bless you, Jim. And with that, I will be voting no on pre-considered Resolutions 787, 788, 789, and 790, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to first congratulate the colleagues, Councilmember Brewer, for Intro 1190, as well as the men and women of the FDNY and the unions who came, testified, and surely convinced us of the plight that they've had to endure because of this pandemic. It's a pleasure to have voted on this bill and to work with them to make sure that this important part of our city workforce is able to serve. Aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias. Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Mr. Leader, I request the opportunity to speak about how great your bill is.
I will definitely give you permission for that.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. 279A is a really great bill that does, that works on a lot of issues that, that other cities around the country are going to face, because when you make this kind of move, there are a lot of labor issues that are involved to make sure that we don't lose jobs when we do this, and the Majority Leader worked through this bill with great aplomb and deserves a lot of credit for it. The council passed a bill like this in 2005, but this bill has things that we couldn't have dreamed about 18 years ago, and that bill sorely needed an update, and the Majority Leader came forward with this bill and worked at all the labor issues, and it was a lot of yelling and screaming, but it got it done. It's a great, it's a great bill that'll be replicated throughout the country. I congratulate other members on their bills and, and will fondly miss Jim Karas, who I've known for more than 30 years, and I wish him all the best in what he does next. And yes, I do have his cell number, and with that, I vote aye. Thank you, Mr. Leader.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye on all, with the exception of Reso 787, 788, 789, and 790, of which I vote no.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Every year, the council is required to set the property tax rates for each property class, and legislature allows us to adjust those rates to lessen the impact on small family homes, so I will vote yes with reservations. These property tax rates are still very high, but better than the rates proposed back in June, when I voted no. Unfortunately, these rates are grouped together in one vote for all classes. Current rates are still far from a solution to a real problem. Our unfair property tax system continues to burden working on middle-class families, and we need all money to act on real property tax reform now. So I'm voting yes on all, and as I said, my vote yes on property taxes are with reservations. Thank you.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all, and we'll miss you, Jim.
Marte.
Aye.
Milly.
Aye on all.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Narcisse.
Jim, I love the face, and thank you so much for everything you do, and aye on all. I love happy faces.
Nurse.
I vote aye on all.
Ose.
I vote aye on all, and Jim, I want a piece of candy, please, and you'll be missed.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for a precondition Reso 787, 788, 789, and 790.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all. Congrats, Majority Leader, on a great bill, and thanks for all your years of really tremendous service, Jim. We'll miss you.
Richardson. Jordan. Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Thank you, Jim, for all your years of service. I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
As someone who was once part of the leadership at New York City EMS before it became part of the fire department, I'm very proud to have been a cosponsor of Intro 1190, and I also want to thank Jim Karas for his wonderful years of service and wish him luck in his next adventure. Thank you. And aye on all.
Stevens.
Congratulations, Jim, and aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Velazquez.
Aye on all, and thanks for your service, Jim. We love you.
Vernikov.
Aye on all, except pre-considered Reso 787, 788, 789, and 790, and congratulations to my colleagues, Councilmembers Brewer and Ariola.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye.
Juan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just want to recognize that in Sunnyside this week, we've had, we've lost a resident to a fire on 46th Street, and we have had a serious injury to a brave firefighter. So thank you to the more than 60 firefighters and EMS workers who spent hours risking their lives to respond, and congratulations, Councilmember Brewer and Ariola, for passing the Fire and Emergency Management Law, and I would also like to thank Jim Karas for truly sharpening our teeth for our terms and conditions and teaching first-term members like me what it really means to really exercise our powers as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaeger.
Aye on all, with the exception of 788, 789, 790, and Intro 906, and Jim teaches even second-term members, and so I'm very grateful to you, Jim, for everything. Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Jaeger, the Resos, can you clarify for me, please? Sorry.
Sure. No on Reso 788, 789, 790, no on Intro 906, and aye on the remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies. Thank you. Barelli.
Thank you. A brief explanation. I'd like to share the sentiment, wishing Jim a happy retirement, wish him best of luck in the future. I'd like to commend Councilmember Brooks Powers in Intro 906. Tractor trailers are a tremendous problem in my district. They have become, it has become a de facto parking lot for 18-wheelers who are transitioning between New Jersey, the New Jersey Turnpike in New York City, so that's great. I want to just mention why we're voting against pre-considered Resos on the property taxes, even though despite the fact that most of my district is Class 1 properties, and this will actually slightly, by a hair, lower the rate. Ultimately, we talk a lot about housing affordability, and although we need to meet our debts and obligations, and we have to raise the tax levy at this point in the year, we're missing an opportunity on Class 2 properties, which house the majority of New Yorkers to give them slight property tax release, and this is part of the problem why housing has become less affordable for many New Yorkers, and I wish in the future we can perhaps put a little bit more emphasis on lowering the rates for Class 2. Thank you. And I vote aye on all, except pre-considered Reso 787, 788, 789, and 790. Thank you.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Just another note to congratulate the Majority Leader on really setting precedent for the nation with this legislation. This will be the model for the rest of the country to follow. I commend you, Majority Leader, for all the hard work on this incredible bill. Congratulations to all of my colleagues for passing amazing legislation today. I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero negative and zero abstentions, with the exception of Resolution 788, 789, 790, adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions, 787, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, six negative and zero abstentions, and Intro 906A, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, one negative and zero abstentions. We'll move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of resolutions. We do not have anyone currently signed up to speak, so I will move into the voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email, by approaching the DA's. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Pre-considered Resolution 796 calls on the mayor of New York City when contractors contracting for the purchase, operation, and maintenance of zero emission vehicles to procure on the basis of best value. Will all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into general discussion. We will begin with Councilmember Selvina Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm proud to be introducing a pair of bills, excuse me, today to support taxi and for higher vehicle drivers. The first of these bills would allow applicants for taxi driver licenses to receive medical clearances from TLC-approved physician assistants and nurse practitioners. Currently, they can only receive such clearance from physicians. Healthcare visits in the United States are increasingly conducted by non-physicians. From 2013 to 2019, the number of visits to nurse practitioners and physician assistants increased by 14% of total healthcare visits nationwide, to over a quarter of these visits. This legislation will make obtaining a clearance for a license less burdensome for potential drivers. The second bill will return the duration of taxi cab licenses to two years back from one year. The change to one year was a technical mistake and was not intended by the council, but it has real implications for drivers, who must now go through the process of renewal each year. By reverting to the prior licensing regime, the bill will reduce the regulatory burden on drivers. I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on to these bills, and I look forward to holding a hearing on these introductions in the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure to talk about how we can continue to uplift New York's TLC drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm proud to introduce three pieces of legislation today that seeks to improve the overall well-being for New York City families by reducing light pollution near some NYC residential buildings, expanding healthy meal options for our youth, as well as provide a means of support for incarcerated individuals to successfully re-enter society. I'm happy to partner with my colleagues in the state government, Assemblymember Benedetto, Senator Bailey, to push a resolution, excuse me, push a resolution on the city's level that calls on the state legislator and Governor Hochul to sign into law legislation, A 7456 and S 1931B prohibiting residential and commercial properties from operating digital billboards with excessive light near certain Mitchell Lama housing. With my district being home to co-op city, the largest Mitchell Lama development in the nation, reso 797 is vital to protecting New Yorkers in Mitchell Lama housing from the disparities of excessive nightlights, making them more susceptible and disrupting sleep cycles and elevating risk of cancer and poor overall health. Next, Intro 1202 would establish citywide nutrition standards and beverages options for children meals in restaurants and food establishments. I would like to thank the American Heart Association, all advocates, my colleagues who are planning to sign on, and parents for the partnership and the rally today in continuing the groundwork to promote a healthier lifestyle for our future generation. As you uphold the call to serve all New Yorkers, I introduce Intro 1203, which would require the New York City Department of Correction to provide all individuals with discharge papers upon their release from custody. Specifying the date a person entered and was released from custody, these jail release papers promote transparency and accountability in our criminal justice system by providing an official record of individual time served, whether they were hailed pre-trial or sentenced in an order of commitment. I would like to thank you, Majority Leader, for the time, and I would like to urge my colleagues and governments to sign on to these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. Today, I'm proud to be introducing Introduction 1197. This bill fine-tunes Local Law 97 to protect the housing affordability of working and middle-class condo and co-op residents, many of whom are seniors and retirees living on fixed incomes. Our city's goals for climate and sustainability are necessary, which was the original intent of Local Law 97. However, sometimes in the legislative process, unexpected consequences can arise. The bill I'm introducing today focuses on the disadvantaged few whose buildings do not have the resources to get in compliance as quickly as the current schedule of fines demands. These buildings are expected to make costly upgrades and renovations, but cannot do that if they are being drained by penalties. My legislation aims to buy those, to buy those buildings additional time to comply. It would create a more gradual schedule of penalties for those buildings that fall under a certain value. It would improve the method for calculating emissions limits by factoring in open and green spaces and prior upgrades, and it would also consider median property value when deciding penalties. This council can reduce the city's carbon footprint while also doing everything in its power to protect and maintain housing affordability for its working and middle-class residents. Thank you to those that are already co-sponsors, and I hope the rest will join me in this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Sanchez, followed by Councilwoman Wrestler.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, Speaker, for beginning your remarks today focused on Nicolas Feliz Domenech and Kawaski Trewick from District 14. I also want to thank all of my colleagues for your support as you've been reaching out to help this family. Appreciate you, and we'll continue to talk about the GoFundMe page that the family has set up. Please help me to share that with the world in support of the family. I'm devastated for the family of Nicolas Feliz Domenech, a beautiful one-year-old baby who we lost following exposure to opioids at a daycare center here in Cambridge, as well as the three children who are still recovering. This is a painful time for our community, but most importantly, in honor of Nicolas and what his family is requesting today, it's a call to action for our city, the state, and the country. Over and over, as I've visited the parents of Nicolas Feliz Domenech in the basement of the tragedy, they've asked, what are we going to do? What is government going to do, city, state, whoever is in charge, to make sure that this never happens again to another child in our city or anywhere in our country? And to them, I say that we are going to do everything that we can as a council, but we're also going to make sure that we're calling on the federal government to strengthen international interdiction efforts, to strengthen efforts against the ruthlessness of the drug-dealing operations that we see in our communities. And so as we here in New York City pursue better and stronger harm reduction strategies and improve protocols to keep our children safe, there's just so much to do, and I, and I'm thankful to count on our speaker, who cares so much about this situation, and all of you who have reached out. Thank you. And regarding Kawaski Trewick, I just want to join the speaker's remarks and, you know, emphasize that Kawaski should be alive today. He was a 30-plus-year-old young man who was in his home in a supportive housing facility when the NYPD broke into his home illegally entered, as substantiated by the CCRB. And it's just very clear that Commissioner Caban has a responsibility here to pursue disciplinary action. Thank you, Majority Leader, and I, and I look forward to that accountability following four years of inaction by the NYPD.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilwoman Wrestler, followed by Councilwoman Brewer.
Just firstly, want to express my profound sorrow to Councilmember Sanchez and to her community with the horrible passing of the one-year-old in a daycare center due to exposure to opioids, and of course, the killing of Kawaski Trewick. And I strongly echo the speaker's sentiments that we need accountability from the NYPD. Commissioner Caban needs to do the right thing and hold the officers who killed Mr. Trewick accountable. I wanted to just mention a few bills we're introducing today. We all remember too well the apocalyptic air quality incidents that we experienced a few months ago, and unfortunately, they're a part of the new climate realities that we're facing. And we need to make sure that the city of New York is far, far, far better prepared than they were to handle these types of incidents. I was shocked by how inadequately prepared the Adams administration was for this incident, the lack of communication with the public. It has to change. And so we've introduced three bills, one to create Spare the Air Days, that include specific policies to reduce emissions on days where we're experiencing particularly bad air quality, and ensure that homeless New Yorkers, street homeless New Yorkers have the opportunity to enter any shelter in the city of New York to get safe. We've also introduced bills that would require the New York City Emergency Management Office to create a public notification plan for informing New Yorkers about days where we have poor air quality, and an emergency protocol for how they and other agencies must respond to keep New Yorkers safe. We have seen these types of air quality incidents with frequency in other parts of the country, and we've taken best practices from what folks have been doing out West and applied them to local law here in New York, and I hope that we'll be able to see these bills advance and get them passed. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Councilwoman Brewer.
Thank you very much. Two issues. One, reso 791 talks about supporting legislation in Albany that would provide for annual adjustment of the maximum income threshold eligibility for SCRI and DRI and SHE and D, all of which we know need to be increased in order for those, more people to be able to obtain in this very competitive rental world. The second thing I want to mention is, we talk a lot about smoke shops. With school back, every single, I won't say every single, but too many high schools are experiencing vaping in the school. A principal was crying to me on the phone the other day because the entire hallway of his high school is filled with weeds and people vaping in the classroom. So I just bring this to our attention because those smoke shops have got to go, and we have to put more effort between the DA's, the police department, the State Office of Cannabis Management, and Corporation Council. I think that this is a crisis in the making, and I just want to bring to everyone's attention, I hope that you will all join together to get rid of those goddamn smoke shops. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone else signed up to speak? We have Councilwoman Feliz.
I want to echo the words of Councilmember Brewer, and also just want to briefly disclose on the record that I'm an adjunct professor in the CUNY system, host of the community college. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of September 28, 2023, is hereby adjourned.